Now therefore, I ran a name and fellow council member on behalf of the city council. From June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five as a day to honor and congratulate PEO chapter E H. Of Lindsay on its hundredth anniversary, commend its members for their steadfast dedication to the advancement of education and the betterment of our community. And extend our deepest gratitude for their sense of service. It when in witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and pause the civil city of Lindsay to be affixed this one birthday.
On behalf of chapter E H. Okay, so on behalf of the county and Lindsay, we'd like to thank the council for this honor. For our hundred years of service, PEO, health, education, educational organization. As sometimes been called a secret organization, but it's not a secret organization. It's an organization that is secret. And we have had the privilege of working in the Lindsay community. Working on behalf of women in Lindsay and throughout the Atlantic County, throughout the state, throughout the country and internationally. Uh, the uh, there are, there are seven chapters in, in this area. And we are part of that group which is called the S A positive group. And then and our, one of our founding uh, chapter or a chapter who sponsored us was chapter D E in the lay note. And just coincidentally, one of the members, who is the daughter of former chief girl. And so, uh, then we had a celebration on June, definitely on June eighteenth. We had a celebration on June eighteenth where all of our S A positive, S A positive members were in attendance. And we have, we have had the honor of being recognized by them. And by all of our five hundred plus members in the, at the state convention, present at the state convention. Uh, so, and this honor is not any less than that. And we really appreciate this honor and thank you very much for your recognition of our people though.
Ladies and gentlemen, you have a council.
Yeah, if you want to come up here and face that.
Oh, those are Vegas. Yeah, this is a small number of members. She said five hundred members. Okay, okay.
Okay. Yeah. Video one, two, three.
Do you see everybody?
Sure. All right. One, two, three.
Be careful. We're gonna move on to parks, make life better. Marshall, I don't know if you have a few of your videos, or if you guys want to talk about the park for and to recognize you. And all you do, do the soul say.
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna read the proclamation. So this proclamation recognizes the importance of equal access to local parks, recreation, trails, open spaces. And facilities for positive development of all Californians and their communities. Whereas parks and recreation promotes a physical and emotional and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play and activity. And whereas parks and recreation supports the economic vitality of communities by partnering with local businesses and nonprofit and offering events for residents engagement. And whereas parks and recreation creates memorable experiences through youth, sports and enrichment activities, teen centers, programs and senior activity centers. Adult fitness and enrichment programs, free community events and beyond. And whereas parks and recreation fosters social co-mensiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing spaces to come together peacefully, modeling compassion. Promoting social equity and connecting social networks and ensuring all people have access to its benefits. And whereas parks and recreation supports human development and the endless learning opportunity that offers social, intellectual, physical and emotional growth. In people of all ages and abilities. And whereas parks and recreation strengthens community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate community characters, characters and culture. Cultures within history, aesthetic and landscape. And whereas parks and recreation facilitates community problem and issues resolution by providing safe spaces to come together peacefully and serving as a key points of service. Helping our communities feel both physically and emotionally. And whereas the parks and recreation sustains and stewards our natural resources by protecting habitat and open space, connecting people to nature and promoting. The ecological function of parkland. And whereas parks and recreation support safe, vibrant and attractive progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered in their recreational opportunities. And whereas parks and recreation remain a versatile and innovative from providing a vital service, services to communities through local, national or global emergencies. All while adhering to guidelines set forth by government agencies. And whereas the California Park and Recreation Society has released a statewide public awareness campaign, Parks Make Life Better. Do you know for citizens of many benefits in utilizing parks, facility programs and services now? Therefore, be it resolved that the citizens of California recognize the importance of access to local parks, trails, open spaces. And facilities for health and wellness development, inspiration and safety for all Californians. And be it further resolved that we declare the month of July twenty twenty five as Parks Make Life Better Month. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mr. Villarreal, the mayor of City of Lindsay, do hereby proclaim July twenty twenty five as Parks Make Life Better Month. In witness, whereas I hereby set my hand and pause the seal of the City of Lindsay to be affixed this twenty fourth day of June twenty twenty four. Marshall, we appreciate you. We're doing our good deed, but we'll see it. Okay, thank you. We're gonna take another picture. You being here, you don't want to get in there?
Yep.
All right, one, two, and three. Thank you.
So we're gonna move on to council report. You can start with my letter.
Freeing everybody wants to start this of those, um, so I say everybody can address us to the PEO, uh, E H. And.
Music.
Chapter E H. Thank you for all your efforts and working, and civic engaging as a member of the five national charity organizations that they want themselves to improve their minds. Thank you. And I haven't been as busy as we have, but I've actually, I think the C C R C will be in absence of a mayor who's been taking control of that community. And I just wanted to share out that the rebranding of our new platform for the websites and all the logos. So that's going to be interesting. I guess before it can look as if it's set torta, so it achieves that. So it looks a little more streamlined, that's not. And they were also sharing that an equation society with us for transit and the portal transit as well. You, uh, we have a service that a part of which you can dial and provide and you know, charge us five dollars, you can go anywhere on that. Service line, so it's nice. There's also a conversation that that was being had, that was met by a council member, Greg. Who's discussing the use of the transit center. They have a transit center similar to what Lindsay is going to have. And he's trying to maximize his use, so something for us to think about how to maximize our use. Even, um, we're gonna have it built and people want to build, it's gonna take a couple months to get it up. And it's been created to the transit line, so we gotta make sure that to our best to maximize the potential of our transit center when it's built. And yeah, the council that makes me, so we'll have one in July. And I look forward to, to bringing anything that can have the success for me. Uh, I also have been part of the skimmers program, but it's a slimmer swimmer's program that's being held at the water center. I just came from a homie or setup of a homie, home starts at six thirty, so make it happen to us. Um, you know, it's been great to see all the new members from all the towns come to Lindsay, they always support. Lindsay was built really well. It's a lot of shade in the afternoon, which is a big luxury as I find out as they're in motion. And so we have hundreds of people there asking speed and it's a great opportunity to, to inspire people to the, to the ones. I also got to attend, uh, uh, C W C community large center events at the Creole conservative one on the height. It was nice to get out in Elgin and put a beautiful siren that we have, high seventies, it was nice. And we discussed our water reports that we have and I look forward to seeing the twenty twenty four water report. Making sure that we deliver the best possible, possible. And then I also have been coming my way around the different projects of Juanas and Frisbee. To buy kind of solve a layout, which is nice. Frisco's movie, movie hall?
Disco.
Disco, disco. I'm gonna make sure you correct that Juan has been helping us to go on board, so thank you to that organization and Amanda and crew as well. I'm sure Marshall's involved and others. So thank you for continuing to improve our parks and also I think the public service department for creating the army at Tafflin Park. Uh, it's something that we appreciate and that means it's appreciated. Also delve by there, I just straight kind of see you wanna go by. And you're good, but you know, I'm gonna keep passing gas soon. Um, and then go by the truck stop that we're gonna have and on the west side. So that's getting going very quickly. So there's some projects that are happening. It's nice to see Lindsay continuing to develop. And I would look forward to continuing to attend a fire hockey the next, uh, you know, few months. I think both, both last Fridays, banana potato and crumble and ran away. But I hope it goes well attended. Thanks to our manager Gina and all her employees for making sure that happens. Yeah, thank you very much for attending.
Thank you, Joe. All right. So I did attend a T K meeting as a host for Mayor Lindsay and she does not give enough credit for the work that she does because wow. That was a lot of information and she's just, if there's a lot of things going on in the county, um, but there's a lot of money coming in for grants and a lot of roads. Getting fixed throughout the county, but one of the main things that I brought, there was a, um, a presentation, um, I discovered it's very common. Um, it's, it's kind of a special event and it's very kind of film commission. So it's basically about the arts and they're trying to get more people, um, like the tourism in Slare County is huge. Um, uh, you know, we, and in law enforcement or here at the K P, we've met a lot of tourists from Germany, Japan, from all over the world. They come here to look at our trees that are right there, that are in your backyard. So it, it was really cool. The presentation was really good. Um, I would like to see it come on here because they bring people to our university. Like the taco, I don't know if you saw about the taco, um, it's like a taco tour and just this, yeah, different things. So it's, it's pretty cool. Um, I did have some brochures, but not from my home, so I'll give it to you at the end. Um, and today we attended, um, the tour trend, which was, I'll let you make pop up, tour trend. We, uh, we attended that and supported, um, them. We didn't run, we just supported them. Thank you. And I want to thank you too for backing me up at those two meetings. I know they could be long, um, but I appreciate you guys. Um, I attended also, um, Ryan Hanks' going away party. He did, you know, he went off to Exeter, which I was like, ooh. Um, we wanted to do well. Um, also did the Republic torch today. Was it Raisa yet? Or Claire, sorry?
That's Larry Roddick.
Yeah, we were, so yeah, that was cool. Um, other than that, I don't think I had anything else today, so.
Okay, while Ryan was gone, though, please don't care a spare for us. Marshall, you're guys, that's a wonderful job. I'm always going for the parks, my system is really good. Um, and they're always worth whether it's in the humidity weather or it's cold. They're always out there doing something. Today they were putting some skin. And, and it's just wonderful to see how much private work, um, but we all appreciate.
And if any of you guys get a chat started by the album, don't forget the album. It's really super, super cool. I'm excited for that.
I don't want to be, or just stay cool, um, don't get too much of a gap. They do, and they just, they keep on, I do all their, putting the grass, putting some type of work out with you. Thank you guys and not me.
My favorite. So when we move on to public comment, the public is invited to comment on each subject under the perispecs of Lindsay City Council. Please note that the speakers that wish to comment on a regular item or public on public caring tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to speak on public comment. For that item is requested by mayor. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person with thirty minutes for the total comment period unless otherwise indicated by mayor. The public may also choose to submit a comment before the meeting via email. Public comments received via email will be distributed to the council prior to the start of the meeting and incorporated into the official minutes. However, that will not be read aloud. Under the state law, matters presented under public comment may not be acted upon at this time. At this time, we'll take your public comments.
With the reader and commentators, um, I didn't know what to say. Very proud of the Lindsay president. Uh, first off, I want to, um, thank the council and city staff for all you do, especially for raising my flag this month. And, uh, to his quick present, um, it's one for you, never. Say the stand for diversity of the nation. And I just wanted to. Um, and I have a ton of, for actually.
Oh, yeah, there you, before we comment, at this time, only once, only twice, go. We're gonna move on to the city manager report. Welcome, Tyler.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor. I've got a few things I want to highlight and one of the things that were proposed in the board or the council packet was, uh. Our chief put together a weekly report, he's been putting that together, so. So, um, it's in the whole packet, um, it was on my. So there's only one since, um, since it's tenure in the interim role, uh, there's only one this time, but, uh, plan on having that great. So we'll have, you know, more of the company, but just, I think one, it highlights some of the great work that the men and women of the public safety department do on a weekly basis. And it covers both fire and police services. So, um, also a little bit of the doc stuff as far as what happened in town, you know, after. So it's always nice to see. Oh, that's what that promotion was last Friday. Okay. So now you can look at that. So for public, you're probably improved back and getting information on that. Uh, so I just appreciate that information, uh, being shared in that type of place or keep us warm, warm as far as what some of the departments are doing. So I look forward to more of that. So, uh, I want to highlight the, uh, uh, our recreation department has been working diligently this past few weeks on the brawl. I know this stuff, but I like color wrong. Nordest sand is colored wrong. Uh, so, uh, we think. So, uh, thank you. I know that's, uh, that's work and should be complete over the next couple of weeks. Got a couple more times. A couple of days. So, uh, very good with that. We're still continuing to actively recruit for our clerk, uh, finance director. Uh, last week we had interviews for our deputy clerk position. Uh, we selected an individual out of that and that individual accepted the offer, um, last week. Uh, so, um, they are going through a background check, but assuming that there is an issue, uh, they said start in a couple of weeks. So we'll, we'll have a deputy clerk and then hopefully sort of get out of that, we can go with the other. So we're, uh, kept the interviews for the others. Um, so that's moving along quite nice. Um, as mentioned, the audible makes good progress. Um, so we are continuing to move forward. We, we, we've had over the past couple of months, we've had some reviews from, uh, some of our grand boards that have loosened up some of the deadlines. What we have to spend the money and how that we have to spend by. So, um, not that there was any concern or issue for it, but it just gives us a little bit of flexibility. We won't have to push quite as hard, um, to get some of the work done. So vast majority of the work, um, over eighty percent of the work is going to be completed by next week. Um, there's still some punchless items that are continuing to move forward. So yes, we saw it and some of the things are getting, uh, moved out. And so I think there's a session building that's going to be placed within the next day or two out there. Quite a bit of fencing and other items. Uh, we've had a little hang up with, uh, with our electric provider and getting some lines, getting those moved. Getting some of the, but all is going very well, so. Getting some equipment, but all is going very well. So we'll be ripper on the bill next spring for baseball softball out there. And even the center for basketball, that's important for me, right? That's a nice city more, more of our good planning. Give some nice shade, throw it a nice, fully coming together. We do have an economic development meeting this Thursday. It's at six o'clock. So the last few times it's been at three thirty, we are moving at six in order to accommodate people's schedule. Make it a little more friendly for the public. On the agenda for Thursday's meeting, we are going to be having a presentation by the Slurry County. Not a problem corporations. They're going to be finding a full update on their activities throughout the county and specifically in Lindsay. As well as there will be a report on upcoming building activities in and throughout the city. This is something the council received several months ago. So it'll be an update to that. But for any members of the public that are interested, I'm going to, the meeting will be take place here in this chamber. It's this is a lot. Feel free to come if you're interested in knowing what's been going on and about in the past year or so and what's upcoming. Last couple of items I want to mention is we've got, this is our last meeting before the fourth of July. So a great holiday at the perfect America. And with that, we will answer our next council meeting. Not yet meeting on July eighth, but our, our next meeting will be on July twenty second. So we'll be guarded that most of those.
Thank you. We're going to move on to consent calendar. We think items approved in one motion unless it is pointed for discussion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made. In which event, an item will be removed from the consent calendar to be discussed and noted upon by separate motion. We have a motion to approve the founder. No motion from Sanchez, second by Flores, all in favor. Five oh passes, the motion passes five oh. We're going to move on to public hearing, eleven point one public hearing and consider as approval of resolution twenty five point four. So the continued maintenance and last weekend lighting districts twenty twenty five, the twenty twenty six fiscal year. And this is submitted by Mayor.
Good evening, I actually can't keep my glasses on my standard. Thank you, council for having me. This is a continuation of the last two meetings that we've been having about the last weekend lighting districts. So this is the formal public hearing. So we've been about, that means that we're presented on the last council meeting. So just to recap, there's eight different last weekend lighting districts within the city limits. Last meeting we presented what the piece that we're proposing to charge, so we can recover the cost of the expenditures. From this year twenty four, twenty five, so we can project it into what we're planning on spending on twenty five, twenty six. There's a few increases in some of the, there's two on that we're not able to meet please and because of this financial status. I provided some of the financial notes for each of the districts, noting what districts have deficits, some of the circumstances. But most importantly, recommending that in the next fiscal year, something is done, you would have to do a full analysis. So because some of the districts are from nineteen ninety, so they need to be brought back quick or brought in into twenty twenty five rates. So the services can be improved or can be expanded, but that's something that council will provide direction to staff later on. But with that, that completes my presentation. So tonight we asked council to conduct the public hearing for resolution twenty five, twenty four. And if I can answer any questions after that, and then I ask council to adopt the resolution. So we can present this to the tax hall by the deadline of August ten.
I'm going to open it up to public comment. Do you have any public comment or a lot of my one?
I don't have an issue with the amount. The only issue I have is back when we revealed the last state in that area. I'm over the tier of the state. There was supposed to be some stuff inside that non-alignment that was never, never completed. I was trying to find my notes.
So the tier of the state.
Right. You got the great tree. I'm just saying.
Thank you, Eric. Do you have any more public comment for eleven point one? Any more public? Close at this time. We have to hold on this without a motion. Sorry, do you have any comments, questions from council? She's here.
This is a one, this is a one year. Yeah, so this is annual. So this is just for this upcoming fiscal year. This will be reviewed again next spring about the same time. And some of the things that we talked about in the last meeting as far as looking into some efficiencies, looking at some rates. See whether or not they're charging appropriately. We still get some costs back from that. So that has not occurred yet. So once that happens, if I want to see whether or not it's worthwhile, move forward with the test study and whether or not there's possibility for the election. For all that, there's multiple set for that.
Do you have any questions? Do you have a motion? I move that we approve. A motion from Dave, second from Sanchez, all in favor. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, eleven point one, twenty five, ten quarters. All in favor? Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to eleven point two, the lengthy collection of refuse and the movement T P on county property tax hall and by resolution. Action recognition by Kyler Crocker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This is an annual process that we need to do for elections for several years. The trash refuse comes on residents' property tax roll. The reason that switched several years ago was to help with increasing the collection rates. So people, property owners and residents tend to pay their property taxes on use their homes. So they're much higher rate of collections via this and that. But it takes a little bit more staff time, a little more processing to get, get on the annual property tax roll. But this is, we're not seeking any increases. It's simply an act that we would move forward with providing this and giving down to the paper for this. As you can see in the staff report, there's everyone that is now fully charged.
Might open a second of public hearing? Right of motion? Oh, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm also going to review the eleven point two. And then I'm glad the motion from Claudia and Nate, all in favor. Motion back to five to zero. We want the action items, twelve point one, the sale of vacant city on properties. This is by Kyler Crocker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. So these properties, we had listed in the past, we had a previous group of individuals that were interested. These are the four parks that are at the corner of Ponewood and Elmore downtown. There was, some have been vacant for quite some time. Others have businesses that were unfortunately consumed by fire. The city, after with the COVID, they are putting money, there was around city, determined there was the best interest of the community. All of that to clean up those pieces that were impacted by fire and purchase those two pieces of property. So since that is done, now we're looking at recruiting those costs, bringing those funds back into the system. Other terrible purposes. So the first buyers that were interested, they had a ninety day escrow with the sixty day logs. That they could evaluate and determine that. At the end of the sixty days, they determined that wasn't a good fit for them. But luckily for us, we had already had interest from this individual, it's listed here, Mr. Magdal, who had already expressed interest. And his desire was actually to negotiate with him ten thousand dollars more than the previous offers, four hundred thousand dollars. All the gas offer. In the past, the previous inquiries that were. Prior to. So it's not only more money for the city, but it's also in a quicker time. Individuals interested in having some commercial opportunities, building a commercial building onsite. As well as some possible multifamily residences, but the primary focus of it. Whereas the opposite, previous developers were interested in more apartments and with a smaller first floor business partner. And the agreement is the same agreement as far as.
Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Once the thing is sorted, I wanted to ask, is there current E D W and the first step maybe decide? Based on the previous approvals from our source development, it's not that there were residential units and all these businesses. Plan for that space. I'd like to consult to prioritize business development on residential spaces. We already have residential units and a lot of good jobs and guaranteed to be a place that supports jobs and for example. That, the reason why I'm saying this is because from my experience, we're getting a lot of this downtown. I saw first hand how they do this. And then the business that's leading, they need to avoid the public safety concerns. It's been people gathering in the walls and smoking marijuana in two weeks. So it's not the kind of environment that I was given. So I just wanted to ask if the city has adopted any updated zoning codes for the property. Probably not, but will be an option for the public to play on how this property is developed. They just ask us again, I believe we should be proactive instead of reactive, especially when it tends to the economic relevance.
Thank you. Do you have any more comments, public comments to twelve point one?
Because I found down the street in there is unfortunately a homeless. That like, we are living in over the next few churches, right there, right next door, bunch of trash. Right there. What do you expect people to gather? People to walk down our streets. It is not the like one. If this residence, all we're looking at more for people. How can I see people, some people, if they're rental, then they're here in the property. They don't, because they're renting, so they can get up and be there if they want to. When it's a house and people are buying their house, that's different, you know, they have pride in the property, they think about that. But if, like she was saying, commercial, don't make it a residential, you know, I encourage you guys to not make it a residential. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any more public comments? Public comment is both. And this is just, we're just asking in terms of the suggest to sell, correct? Am I correct right now?
That's correct, yeah. So it is zone for commercial. So if there was a change, I would have to come back to council, review that. There would be some issues from that or some other things that was outside of norms. But like I said, the individual that's here by does have a desire to have it primarily be commercial. So that is what the interest in the plan is. It's not as far along as the other developers. They don't have specific plans yet in place, but they would have to go through the city and all of all the processes. Actually develop it and build it. So definitely make sure that it applies.
Thank you for clarifying that. Is that a motion? For twelve point one? I'm looking for Claudia, I'm looking for Nate, all in favor. Right, passes, motion passes five to zero. We're going to move on to twelve point two, compared people of resolution twenty five, twenty six for the establishing, establishing of the post-compliment and express program. And this, and it is, I cannot say that, it is by the public agency retirement service. And this is by Kyler Crocker.
Alright, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. We have, we have Matt on the line who is from ARS. Who will be giving a presentation shortly. I want to give a brief introduction. So this is an opportunity for us to help primarily to meet one of the requirements of one of our pass audits. So one of the things that our auditors have stated is that we need to make a more concerted effort towards our O P E V. Funding our O P E V obligation for status, our retiring healthcare plans that we are required to need to go through. So this organization, ARS, is able to help us with that with the one fifteen trust that is created through the IRS tax. Um, that is created through the IRS tax code, um, as well as our general income basis for the capital. Uh, CalPERS. So, with that, uh, I will take it over to Matt, and he's got a presentation for us. Uh, that he will go through, um, quickly. Uh, I will, I will suggest. Matt, are you sharing your screen?
Yeah.
Hearing us?
Trying to say something. Can, uh, can you see my screen, Kyler?
We can, and I can even hear you. Wow, that's all these things. Well, take it over, Matt.
Wonderful. Um, Madam Mayor and members of council, thank you for welcoming me to present to you this evening. Again, my name is Matt Spooner, and I'm with Public Agency Retirement Services, uh, otherwise known as PARs. And I'm here to, tonight, to take you through a brief presentation on our one fifteen trust. And we can go ahead and launch in. Um, this first slide may look relatively, um, simple, but one of the things that I'd like to point out to you, when you work with PARs as an agency on our one fifteen trust, is that you actually have the ability to work with an individual who is a true asset manager. In this case, it would be an individual like Andrew Brown from P F M Asset Management. This is a distinctive piece of working with the PARs team, is that you actually have an expert in investments. That would be the fiduciary, you know, overseeing the kind of the financial responsibility of this trust for your agency, which is a really unique component of working with PARs on this type of a tool for, uh, for the city. Next up, I want to talk about the team at large. If you're looking at this from, you know, um, the top of the mountain, PARs, we're like the quarterback of the team. We are the consultative body, we're the record keepers, we are the ones that are your day-to-day contact. But we do not perform all the duties across this one fifteen trust team. U S Bank, which I'm sure many of you have heard of, is, um, the trustee of this trust. And they're the ones that are safeguarding the plant assets, they're the ones holding the money. And then, as I mentioned a moment, a moment or two ago, P F M Asset Management are the investment, um, specialists and, and experts. And they're the ones that are going to help steward the investments on behalf of the city. So this is the team that you would be working with. I also want to point out the fact that we work with well over five hundred clients in the state of California within our trust. And I have a number of cities and towns, counties, like Bakersfield, Danube, Selma, you know, Kern County, Tulare County, um, special districts, um, all in and around your area that we work with, uh, that are highlighted in red. So, the bottom line is that not only do we work with hundreds of these one fifteen clients throughout the state of California, but we work with many of them in and around your immediate area, um, as you can see here, including Lindsay Unified School District, uh, as well as the County of Tulare. Next, I want to talk about the nature of the one fifteen trust. Really, what is this? A great way to think about the one fifteen trust is that this is a savings account on steroids. It's a savings account that can actually be invested in the stock market. And the, the trust has two different components of it that are both going to be relevant for the city. One side of the trust can actually be a pre-funding vehicle for your post-employment healthcare obligations. That's called the O P E B side of the trust. Then the other side of the trust is for pension pre-funding. And there are a number of different benefits to having a one fifteen trust. But one of the great benefits that's worth noting for the city is that you can establish this trust at no cost to the city. To actually establish the trust does not cost anything. The only time that there's any fees associated with the trust is once you start to actually fund the trust with any sort of contributions. But until that time occurs, we can actually help you establish the trust, so it's a tool waiting for you. It's like a free insurance policy for the city to have ready for it. Now, we can get into some of the higher points of the two different branches of the trust. The first being the O P E B side of the trust, which once again is for pre-funding those post-employment healthcare obligations. This is a snapshot from your latest actuarial evaluation of where the city currently sits as far as its O P E B obligations. As you can see right now, there is just over, or I should say, just under one point four million dollars as far as the liability that the city is currently carrying. And the fiduciary net position, that's just a way of saying, how many assets do you have to offset those liabilities? And in, in the present moment, there are none. So right now, your total liability is, once again, just under one point four million dollars. So, once again, the point of establishing this trust, in part for the O P E B side of the trust, is to start working toward funding this liability for the city. Um, so this is really the state of play of where your O P E B, um, status sits right now. And what the trust is in part hoping to benefit to start funding this obligation that is carried by the city. Um, why pre-fund these, these obligations? It is a best practice that is laid out by, um, G F O A. And again, these assets in part are helping to offset the obligations that are being accrued by the city from a post-employment, um, uh, healthcare benefit standpoint. So, a variety of reasons of why you would want to pre-fund, but those are two of the largest ones. Now, let's talk a bit about the pension pre-funding side of the trust, which, once again, we call our Pension Rate Stabilization, uh, Program. This is a snapshot for the city right now, that we actually pulled numbers from CalPERS. So these are CalPERS's numbers, not our numbers. But as you can see through this, um, these numbers, the city right now has, um, just under seventy percent funded ratio with its pension obligations. That's actually something that the city should be patting itself on the back for. That is really a great place to be. The range that we tend to see at PARs is anywhere between sixty to eighty percent. And so the city is actually in a good position right now. Of course, that percentage can fluctuate based on the liability as it continues to grow throughout the years. And that's where I want to direct your attention toward the bottom right-hand quadrant of the slide to show you that, within the next several years, the obligation that the city will have from a pension liability standpoint, again, being, um, directly pulled from CalPERS's actuarial evaluation, is showing that that obligation is going to grow by over forty-four percent in the coming years to an annual contribution of, um, two point two million. So the question becomes, where is the money going to come from if the budget of the city of Lindsay is not going to grow also by over forty-four percent in the coming years? And the answer, in part, should actually be the one fifteen trust. Money can come from that trust to smooth out that obligation and stabilize that obligation, which is why we call this the Pension Rate Stabilization Program. Again, a variety of reasons of why any agency would want to pre-fund pension obligations. But as I mentioned in the previous slide, one of the biggest reasons why pre-funding makes a lot of sense is that the money is there in this account for you to smooth off the payments that you have in any given year in case you have a tough financial year and you can't make that obligation. So it's this smoothing tool, as we call it, to ensure that the city can take care of that obligation for its employees. As far as how this process works, should you decide to move forward with this trust, what we're going to do is get you in front of our, um, asset manager from P F M Asset Management. They're going to understand various, um, considerations within the city, um, including when the timing of the funds might be, um, needed, the investment philosophy and the risk tolerance of the city. That's ultimately going to produce a recommendation. Most of our agencies that we work with, once again, over five hundred in the state of California, are in a moderate investment stance, meaning that about fifty percent of the, um, investments are in stocks. And the rest would be within, um, within the money market or within bonds. But we have, um, organizations that are more or less conservative than that, but moderate tends to be where most organizations land. And then ultimately, your asset manager is going to be someone that the city can call upon at any given point in time. Should the market take a big hit and drop a thousand points in today, and the city wants direction on how they should actually manage their one fifteen trust, they can go to that individual twenty-four seven to get good guidance on what the, um, right approach should be for this trust fund. Um, as I mentioned earlier, there is no, um, no fee to establish this trust. The only time that fees are assessed is once the trust is funded. And, um, so this is considered to be, you know, at least before you start funding it, it's kind of a free insurance policy. It's a tool, um, that you can have that is on the shelf for you to use whenever you feel it is relevant for the agency. Um, so once again, this is my last slide, but why take this step as the city? Um, we want you to be able to smooth out any sort of pension obligations that you may have that are mounting in the coming years. And ultimately, having a tool that you can start to address and leverage today to meet the needs that are going to be, you know, ultimately, um, you know, obligated tomorrow and in the future. So these are some of the really big reasons why we would encourage, um, strongly, um, the city to consider adopting a one fifteen trust. But I'm clearly here right now and glad to answer any questions, um, you know, from council or, you know, from the public. So, thank you so much for your time, um, you know, for giving me a few minutes tonight to talk about this trust.
Any comments, any questions? Open this up the public mic.
Is that me? Who is going to fund this? With the, uh, how are they going to be funded? Does that mean the city, that the taxpayers are going to be funding this to get to start with? How are we going to get them, how are we going to be funded? I don't understand. Where does the money come from?
Yeah, it's a great question. Um, there's no one way. Oh, I'm sorry, Kyler, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, we can, we can discuss this, um, later, but, but as of right now, it would be, um, via budget process. These are obligations of our account, so, so we're not talking, so, so the, our pension obligation, what we owe, this is what we owe our employees, that when they retire, you're going to get a certain amount of, of money based on how much you made, whatever. And so CalPERS, that they are the system that we're a part of, this would help our annual contribution for that, as well as with our medical retirement. So we're already paying, it's not a matter of if we're going to pay, it's a matter of can we utilize some of our existing city funds to create a rainy day fund to help build a reserve in there to help us with future obligations that we're, that we know we're going.
Okay, I understand that, but do we need, I mean, I'm still thinking the city, you're stretching. You're stretching the budget too much. You know what I'm saying? You're trying to get money for this and that. I can understand that, but see, but if you're going to do something like this, which is really correct. If we have the money. We don't have the money. To me, that's like you're stretching yourself too much. Something to get. That's the way I see it. Something to get, because the city does not have, like, that's the way I see it. Then it does not happen, if you're funding something like that, or pre-funding or whatever, you're saying. That's my thought. Thank you.
Any more public comments? No public comments, so we'll give you that question. Go ahead.
Um, hi, I just think it's a question, um, you have something about me. And I also would like to know if there's, uh, any type of withdrawal penalty?
I'm, I'm sorry, if, if you wouldn't mind leaning into, uh, maybe your microphone a little bit closer. Um, I'm having a hard time hearing the question.
Okay. I would like some clarification on the fee that we have mentioned. And I was wanting to know if there was going to be a penalty.
Yeah, so, um, Kyler, if you could help clarify, I'm not hearing correctly, because I can hear you a little bit better, but I think I heard something about a penalty fee in there.
So the fees, I think on, uh, slide fourteen, if you want to pull that up. So there's a, a ratchet fee that's, uh, based on the amount that's invested. Uh, and there's a percentage that's given, so all in, I think if, if we were to make any deposits, that would determine that, that that was something that we could do financially and how much. If they were, uh, at the highest rate, it would be point six percent. And at the lowest rate, it would be point three percent. So that's, so those would be the fees. And then the other question was, as regards to, um, when we're ready to withdraw to, to pay some of our obligations, are there, um, fees or are there any penalties for withdrawing any of that, any of the funds? How limited are they for us?
Yeah, so Kyler, I think you covered off the, the first question, you know, sufficiently, but it's a sliding scale as far as the fees go, as far as the basis points that are assessed based on how much money is in the trust. And so you can see that the more money that's in the trust, the lower the basis point fee is. Um, which is, uh, you know, uh, covered off for the first question. Uh, the second question is that the trust is there for the city to leverage, should they need it to, uh, or should they need to leverage it? And there would not be any penalty in actually taking a disbursement from the trust in order to cover O P E B expenses for, you know, O P E B related needs or pension expenses for pension-related needs. Either to, in this case, a pension reimburse the agency, um, or to pay the retirement system directly. And in the case of O P E B, to pay the healthcare system directly or to reimburse the agency for those expenses. So there would not be a fee to take a disbursement to handle those types of, um, those types of, you know, um, dispersments from the trust.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, or, yeah.
Okay.
About the channel.
Yeah. Yeah. There's.
Only for us.
Right, and so that, so if we made this, this would be specifically for these two types of obligations. So, we would be, um, restricting the fund in there for O P E B and for pension, which, um, from my standpoint, I think also is a safeguard to ensure that we're meeting those obligations. So, again, tonight, we're not necessarily talking about any type of funding for it, but we would be restricting our funds. Similar to like how an enterprise fund, that their funds are only supposed to be utilized for those particular certain. In our case, waters of the trash, um, but in this case, if we were to put in funds into this one fifteen trust, it wouldn't have to be utilized for our CalPERS, uh, payments, or, you know, whether it's this year, we can let the fund build over a period of time and start withdrawing later on, or handle it for our O P E B, for our healthcare retiree, or retirees, okay? So those would only, even though it's not allowable. So you wouldn't want to over, you wouldn't want to put too much money in that, but you would want to have some order to cover this cost.
And just, from where you come to go for it?
Well, as of right now, we haven't designated any funds for this, so we're not planning on funding it at this point in time. So that would have to be through our budget process. We would look to evaluate, see if and when we would fund it. So, there's no obligation to fund it every year, or even on an ongoing basis, but we would need to take this first initial step to just create it. So, we can create the fund and sit on it for three, four, five, ten years. But realistically, I think based on where, where our obligations are moving, we would want to, as funds are available for budget, as we find, um, savings, this would be a tool for us to save additional money, uh, for other debt. Because we've, we've talked about some of our other debt that we have on the books.
Oh, that's funny.
Right.
My concern is, we're, you know, saying we're getting some money from, uh, law. Right, so that's what we put into their fund. However, if we couldn't share, it were restricted by how we draw.
Right.
So, that's only.
Well, and, and so that's why, I mean, again, we would do that through the process, so we would have council's input on that. I mean, if there was a certain desire to prioritize other debt, returning back to debt. So, that's definitely our accounting strategy as far as how we fund this. But again, um, if we don't have this in place, and, and the primary reason why we're talking about this is to show that the auditors, the state auditors in particular, in their latest report in December, said that we needed to start making an effort on the whole debt of property. So, this would show that we are making an effort, um, and even. Um, and even if we minimally put in somewhere, right, we don't have to necessarily put in those over a million dollars of obligation. If we had a hundred thousand, fifty thousand dollars, right? Um, then it was showing that we're making an effort as far as to uh minimize that obligation in a period of time.
No, I think, I think my concern is the description, or if we. You know.
Use for other.
For other things, once the budget is there, it's taken.
Correct.
Can I read that? Go ahead, Kyler. Sure. Yeah, clearly, how do we pay our, our general fund obligations for our retirees?
Just out of our general fund, we, we plan, we budget for it, and so that comes out. All the other revenues that the city receives, um, that we prioritize those uh funds. So this would, um, that wouldn't change, we still have those annual contributions that we need to do. But um if we had and started building um some reserves in these funds in this one fifteen trust. That would give us options in the future as they grew and developed, and we wouldn't have to necessarily, we still need to use money, so it's. You know, if you have general fund dollars now, that may mean that you can save down the line, um, because you have that saving. Right, so some of the things that we've talked about with ours is that, um, and not necessarily any funds in particular, but. If there are some one-time funds that come into, you know, the city's hands and our, um, their general fund type of dollars. You know, looking at those type of options would be that is a strongly to, to kind of reach that, um, those options. Get this more funded. Then take that burden off of general funds, and then they're both your, with general fund dollars and paying. Um, Matt, can you pull up the slide that shows what our, what our current, uh, what the actuarial showed?
Do you want that for OPEB?
Yeah, for OPEB or just our general pension as well.
Yeah, so this, this is the actuarial for OPEB, and then uh we also have the pension slide as well. And the pension slide is here.
On the pension slide, we have, um, this past year alone, our, our employer contribution was one and a half million dollars. So we had to pay to cowherds. So um it's a significant portion of our budget that we're currently paying in just, um, in an annual opportunity. So again, that's kind of what we're looking at, um, trying to minimize that and recognizing that if current trends. Um, continue, then you know, in five years from now, six years from now, maybe twenty thirty-three or twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one timeframe. That one and a half million would be a point two million dollar uh contribution. So uh we know that it's growing, this is a way to help minimize that impact.
Correct, yeah, and, and to uh support what Tyler was sharing briefly, uh, just a reminder that. The nature of the one fifteen trust allows these monies to be invested in whatever type of stance the um city would like to be in, in the stock market. Which allows those monies to grow faster than the monies within your general fund, which cannot be invested in the stock market in any way. So that is one of the benefits of the one fifteen trust. To Kyler's earlier point, even if you start very modestly, you know, a few years from now, whenever you decide to start. Those monies will likely grow much faster than any money sitting in the general fund. And they are also sequestered for the specific use of paying these types of obligations for the city. Which is also something that, once again, whether or not that's going to be, um, you know, uh, folks coming in from the outside. Recommending that you do this, or when you're looking for lines of credit, when they look at your balance sheets, they will start to see that, you know, these are actually. Um, tools that the city is leveraging to um meet these obligations, which are looked upon quite favorably.
Those would become an asset for that, which we have.
Correct.
Correct, very real asset.
That's the number of the spectrum. And the reason I'm voting about that, and the algorithm for it is one of these. You have value money that can go up at least. And you know. These are money.
What ones are up here?
So I don't understand, it was simply created for everything, for them.
Compliant.
With the state, it's up to us, or even it's up here. After us, ten years from us or whatever, to decide. When, when we do have the money, saying, hey, you don't have the money, you can move it into that, but it's not, we don't have to do a year before it.
Correct.
As the budget. Grows healthier, and we are able to, and there's hopefully no larger bathrooms, you know. Comes along, but it's not, you don't have to put a big amount.
No, we're doing it right now.
Yeah, but we're not talking about putting money through, we're just talking.
And being the one who's taking. Because what Lindsay was doing for a long time has been working, so we got to move the city forward. So do you have any other concerns, questions? So if we happen to sell a building, we could take a small fraction of that, that we don't have planned yet. Put it into accounts, so it's.
That, that, that could be an option. I think there's a lot of priorities, as I think council will share and so, but yes, there were, those type of things would be. If, if everything was equal and we didn't necessarily have priorities, in a, in a normal situation, that would be an excellent way to help fund that. I'm not, I don't vote that aren't applicable, saying that that's the best way to do that tonight, but, but there are, those would be, that would be very careful.
We have another group, is that correct?
Okay.
Hey, do I have a motion to approve this? All for it, so, and we can approve something, so.
I said it.
A motion from Dave, second from Gloria. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, uh, motion passes five zero.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to twelve point three, considering the approval of resolution twenty-five point seven, also by Kyler.
Thank you, ma'am, mayor, council, this is our last item and uh hold the session. Uh, it's action, I think. Um, tonight, we, uh, as many of you are aware, oh. Standing, oh, sorry, we've had some staffing changes over the last few months, and um. So with that, typically, our uh annual budget is approved in June. Uh, for the state of California and for our charter. Um, tonight, because of the changes, we'd like some staff would like further time to evaluate and do. Um, our budget and prepare something comprehensive, that's accurate. Um, at a later date, so we're asking for uh continuance of the existing uh budget that was already approved. For the next sixty days, when we come back to council in August. Um, and provide you with the full update, get your opinion, your input in that. Um, if we didn't make any edits and alterations, we'll go back to you for full approval, uh, for the next six days. So tonight, we're asking for extension of, of the already existing and continuages. Um, what that means from a staff standpoint, is that we can hold our expenses down and minimize uh any type of large expenditure. And continue with uh status forward, don't be a, uh, by this one.
I'll take public comment for twelve point three. Comment, concerns, questions?
I hope you see them. That's it. It's nice. If you want to stay, stay, stay. About after sixty days, you're ready to, you're ready to quit, instead of just sixty days, you're ready to. Just kind of. I'm willing, maybe? That's it.
When you, if you have any other ideas?
I'm just curious, is there a, I think that was.
That's over there, yeah, is this one that we don't know?
Uh, we, 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 we have. The amendment, the amendment technically was uh balanced, I think there's, um, that's one of the things that we are, the immediate budget, um, was, or the. Um, the initial budget, we'll come back with this council after, you know, a few months after it's approved. And um there were reductions that were made, there were different things that happened prior to that, so, um, it was supposed to be, uh, it was supposed to be balanced. And so there, there can be issues. Since then, we've done. A number of things, including we've held multiple divisions open, um. We are going to propose to accommodate some positions, not fill positions, but some of those vacant positions that have been held open for uh over a year. Um, to make sure that uh this upcoming fiscal year will. Will be balanced. You know, which is part of our obligation, not only um per our charter, so our charter outlines that annually, we will approve a balance. So, yeah. That's, that's one of our tasks, making sure that we're providing the services for our investors, but also good business to move that back.
And will the gas cards still on for us?
Exactly.
The gas cards have been on, you've got the pensions, plus. So.
Oh, cool, I have them. Um, and is Mossad, Mossad, to be able, correct?
Yes, Mossad, so, you know, Mossad, our external, our national concept for our uh. Finance director, he's also helping, so um we're actively involved with that. Um, frankly, the si- the sixty days, I think it is an assertive approach. Um, I don't anticipate, we may not make it exactly to the slide one second meeting, but um I am fully in the space that we're. Ready and prepared uh for the first meeting in August, present the budget, and then allow for, within that sixty day period, to also bring it back. Uh, for full approval on the second. So that is, your question regarding the timeline, that's, that's the point.
Good. I have a motion to approve all twenty-three. And twenty-five point seven. And approve twelve point three. I have a motion from Dave, second from Sanctions, all in favor? I, that uh motion passes five zero. Sixty days. Moving on to request for future items. Do you need to present something?
I was here to believe in certain to, and I'm ready to see, I'm not saying we do. Uh, I don't have anybody who has a large, and. Uh, I, I've been hearing the same a lot lately, if you're in a, uh, and if you're in a close one life, and I think you have more of a. Of a community that becomes present and involved, and will, will take more value, I'm assuming, that'll improve. That'll.
Sorry, it's important. Here. No, no, I mean, if you're, if you're, you know, the English, or the, you know, the bank of whatever, I mean, it's standard, you know, everything translates. Very hard. Maybe, maybe we could add another screen?
Yeah.
See, we did. We, we're, staff been looking at multiple options, whether that's screening with our headsets or other types of things, so we can look at a number of options. And see what the best path is in different places.
And there's, because, oh, I'm having a question, but I can't, um, about what you're calling it. For a different time, um, I'm asking you to decide if possible. It's been about a few years. It says six.
Oh, I think.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're gonna be.
I'm trying to be, yeah. I thought it was.
Oh, God. Well, I'll take five.
All right.
We're all. Can I input?
Like, we're gonna move into your first session right now, I don't know what you say, are you guys below? And you?
Thank you.